Whether or not they were to be elected or appointed, that wasn't on the ballot. And the thing contends that, in essence, it's continuing our way to get into that. Because the period of limitations issues comes up twice. Once forth in terms of the action for a collective writ that requires 45 days, filing for 45 days upon triggering of course of action after that. And also we lose your claim of the New Jersey civil right. In any event, of the import here is in March 2013, the state entered into a consent order with the Camden Board of Education that put the Camden Board of Education in full state intervention under Title 18. And as I say, arguably, there are different provisions under Title 52 and Title 18 as to what it is that has to be placed in the April special election. A question before the voters as to whether or not they want to choose their school board members through an appointment process, whether it has to be elected. All right, Mr. Tamusi, I'll hear from you first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Judge, if Title 18A, the CUSAC statute, quality statute, was not in effect, and the provisions could be ignored, and the fact that the district is not, if it's considered that the district's not under intervention, we agree that MIRA would apply, and an election should have been held in 2014. However, CUSAC is in effect, and the district is under state intervention. As such, the more specific statute, the CUSAC statute, has to control because we can't ignore those statutes. We can't ignore those facts. The plain and simple reasoning is, Judge, is that the MIRA statute, and if you look at the legislative intent of the MIRA statute and the purpose of the legislation, which is contained in 52:27 BBB-2.1, is that the purpose of that statute was to coordinate the funding within a distressed municipality, between the municipality and the school board. When you look at the legislative intent of the CUSAC statute, and that's capital Q, capital S, capital A, capital C, the purpose there was specific. It dealt with quality educational programs and governance with regard to a school district in particular. So Judge, if we look at the statutes, the operative statutes here, the one that the plaintiff would wish you to follow, and we look at 52:27 BBB-63.1, we have to compare it with the CUSAC statute at 18A:7A-49E. Now, the MIRA statute says that the election has to be within four years. Question placed on the ballot within four years. The CUSAC statute requires, requires a minimum of three years from the time that the state intervenes in the local school district's affairs, and a one-year period after that. And the opportunity only avails itself to the school board if, in fact, state intervention has ceased. Under the rules of statutory construction, which are set forth in the Thompson case, which we also look at for the substantive, substantive procedural right aspect in this case, we know that the statutes have to be read together in pari materia. We know that the more specific statute takes precedent over the more general statute. So for the substantive reason that we have to read the statutes and harmonize the statutes, something that I think, I know the court, this court has addressed when the referendum came up with regard to the Metro Police, you have to harmonize the statutes and not ignore any single part of the statute. What the plaintiff would require this court to do in order to get the relief that he seeks on behalf of his clients is to ignore the CUSAC statute and ignore state intervention. So that's point one, Judge, of the argument. And I think that that is very clear, that the court cannot do that under the normal rules of statutory construction. Secondly, Judge, there is the issue of whether or not a substantive right avails itself or is attendant upon the plaintiff. Do they have a substantive right under these statutes? The MIRA statute, again, deals with funding and the funding allocation.
If you're right on the first issue, the plaintiff is left with nothing, right?
That's correct.
And let's deal with that first issue before we deal with whether or not there can be causes of action, whether there are periods of limitations issues. I'll deal with them. Let's deal with what I regard as the main substantive issue, is whether or not there was a violation of anything by the Board of Education not placing on the ballot in April 2014, the issue concerning whether or not its members ought to be elected or ought to be appointed. Is there anything for anyone to argue just on that substantive issue?
There's nothing left because before the four, if before the four-year period under MIRA elapsed, the CUSAC statute not only came into being, but the state intervention was the intervening act in 2013, and that became the operative statute.
May I ask you this, sir? Right now, the Board of Education members are appointed, and it's just purely advisory?
That's correct, Judge.
Does the advisory Board of Education have any type of powers other than, I guess, what, to make recommendations, that type of thing?
I think that would take a whole, a whole lot of analysis and more in-depth review here. But I think, Judge, that the advisory board serves a purpose of advising the state-appointed superintendent, Mr. Ohana Far. And I don't think that Mr. Ohana Far, and in fact, I know, Mr. Ohana Far does not take the advice lightly. So they perform an important role.
You know there are a lot of advisory boards in the state.
Agreed.
And none of them, none of them get elected, they're all appointed.
That's correct.
All right, let me ask Mr., is it?
No, that's not, that's not correct.
Excuse me?
Let me ask Mr. Kamovis a few questions on this issue. Personally, it's an advisory board, right?
It is, Your Honor.
I'm trying to think of any other situation than we elect, the state of New Jersey elects advisory boards. Because the entity that they're, either the person or the entity that the advisory board is advising presumably is fully free to reject whatever it is that the advisory board is recommending, right?
Newark Board of Education, Your Honor.
They're elected and they're an advisory board.
They're, they have some powers restored to them, but they don't have full powers. I believe, Your Honor, Camden could potentially.
Oh, now, actually, April 2014, did they have any powers?
Once they entered into the consent decree, which I think might have been, I actually think it took effect a couple of months after that. Once the consent decree took effect, the Board of Education has the power to advise. I also believe that the board would be the entity that if there was a dispute with the commissioner over whether sufficient indicia of governance and operations and finance and personnel and whatnot had been restored, I think they might be able to challenge that. But.
I'm saying, they might have advisory board, either as a board or individual members best standing to do something that individual citizens, individual citizens, as of April 2014 didn't? The reason why I'm getting into all this, just so it's clear. It's somewhat unusual, it seems to me, I could be wrong, I haven't studied it either in this state or the country, but it's, you know, there's an old joke that the lowest, the lowest elected official is the dog catcher. And you've heard that, you know, somebody couldn't get elected dog catcher. But in thinking about it, lower than the elected dog catcher is the advisor, is the elected advisor to the elected dog catcher. Because at least the dog catcher presumably gets to decide which dogs to catch. An advisor to the elected dog catcher would just, I could make recommendations as to which dogs. But anybody can make a recommendation. In other words, I could go to, the advisory board makes recommendations what, to the superintendent, to the commissioner, who does, who does the advisory?
I'd say chiefly the superintendent.
All right. Is there anything preventing, I wouldn't be a bad example, I shouldn't be advising anybody else in government to do anything, but if I were just a private citizen, is there anything preventing the superintendent from asking me, if I were a private citizen, my recommendation about things?
Your Honor, the advisory board, from what I've seen from the minutes, meets from time to time in executive sessions, they're privy to certain confidential information that the general public is not privy to. But I think what it comes down to, Your Honor, is that you're exactly right. The legislature could set this up in a way that says that anything that's advisory is only going to be appointed. Legislature's plenary power.
I want to back up. I'm trying to determine if, if, as of April 2014, the Camden Board of Education was purely advisory, they had no plenary power of their own. They couldn't on their own do anything that a regular citizen could do. Because when I read advisory, like any other advice A can give B, B is free to reject that advice. The reason why I'm going into all this is that assuming this were a close case legally, you're looking at two competing statutes and asking which one, either Title 52 or Title 18 applies in this circumstance. I'm supposing it was close. Probably isn't that close, but supposing it was. I ask myself, why would the legislature want to have a situation where you would have to elect advisory members since it doesn't appear as though there's much of a precedent for that? It's somewhat unusual, I'll give you a chance to correct me if you think I'm wrong, to elect individuals to some type of office that is purely advisory. Normally, we elect people to do things that have some type of plenary right to do it. It may be subject to review, all right? But at least they on their own can make certain decisions. Whereas this advisory board does nothing but advise.
Your Honor, the advisory board, as I said before, is privy to confidential information that your general public could not access under Oprah. They are the official representatives, ostensibly the official representatives of the city of Camden. There are, there are self-determination rights that this is the official spokesman, that this court is the official spokesman.
What do they get to do? What do they actually get to do in terms of public policy, budget, staffing, any type of decision? It sounds like they get to do nothing other than to recommend certain actions, which the superintendent may accept or may reject. But unless the statute says there shall be a presumption that something the school board recommends shall be accepted, or something mechanism like that, it doesn't sound like it's anything more than what the label calls it. It's an advisory board. Now, they may be privy to certain information that I as a private citizen am privy to, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, the President of the United States has a whole slew of people advising him, all right? None of them were elected. They were appointed in terms of the advisors, all members of the White House staff, the cabinet people are appointed, they're subject to Senate confirmation, that type of thing. The reason why I go into this, it seems as though, in some, in some respects, and I say this respectfully, you're trying to pound the square peg into a round hole. The square peg is an advisor, is electing an advisory board. And it seems to me that, at least in New Jersey, and it sounds like throughout the whole country, that's a fairly unusual scenario. Usually, people or entities who serve as advisors to elected officials or other appointed officials, I mean, the superintendent is appointed, right?
Yes.
All right, so you would have a scenario where people would be electing individuals to a board that merely serve as an advisor to an entity that himself or herself is appointed.
Your Honor, here's the thing, if the board were elected at the moment when intervention occurred, there was, there's no question that that board would continue to be an elected board. Okay? The intervention, this is, this is one of the points I made in my reply, is that the, in my opposition, rather, that the state, when it intervenes in a school district, they take the school board as they find it, whether it be elected, whether it be appointed, whether it be in transition. And so when they came into Camden and said, "We're going to take away your powers," as the state legislature has ordained we're allowed to do, "We can take away your powers, we're going to change your form, we're going to, but only insofar as the commissioner is going to add three people to the elected board." That's in the plan of intervention that I set forth, and it's dependent to my initial certification in support of the motion.
Well, there is, there are things that a school board, you have two scenarios. Scenario number one is the school board is in a municipality, and the municipality itself is under MIRA. There's only one of them. There was only one of them, right? The other scenario is the municipality itself is not under MIRA, but the school district is under Title 18 intervention, correct?
Correct.
I assume there are more hurdles for a school district under intervention to do what it needs to do to get that issue on the ballot than in your Title 52 situation. Or at least different hurdles. And maybe it's unfair to say it's more or less, but it's different, right?
Here's the thing, Your Honor, I understand Mr. Tamusi's argument that under the CUSAC statute, there, if the state determines to restore the governance powers to the school board, there is to be an election on elected or appointed status within a year after the restoration of those powers. I understand that. But I don't see anything in CUSAC that says that is the only instance, and that elections on elected or appointed status are forbidden prior to that point. What I see in this is that the legislature is maximizing the opportunities for self-determination. In MARA, they said, we're passing Chapter 337, Governor Corzine calls it the Camden Freedom Act, we're going to remove the overseer, we're going to give people the say on elected or appointed four years from now. And when they passed this, legislature knew Camden was at risk at any moment of being subjected to intervention. And what we were left with after Chapter 337 was a situation where during the rehabilitation term, there's, it goes through, it's seven pages of the NJIS Act. If the board is under, if the district is under intervention, if the district was previously elected, if the district has, if the Board of Education has five, or seven, or nine members, all these different scenarios of what, how the board is going to be composed during the rehabilitation term.
Here's the thing, I have to tell you, I didn't, you know, if you're experienced in this type of way, you look at it, a lot of this stuff is second nature, it makes sense. I can tell you that when I practiced law, I dealt with one car hitting another car for the most part. And this stuff doesn't come all that often here in the Superior Court, it comes up on occasion, and that with great frequency. I didn't spend a huge amount of time going through the thick of all the nuances between the applicable aspects of Title 18 and the applicable sections of Title 52. But it did seem to me as though the standards for allowing a school board that's under Title 18, right, full intervention under Title 18, getting on the ballot so that the voters can determine whether or not they want their Board of Education members either elected or appointed, had different standards. I wouldn't say better, worse, harder, easier than a similar situation, but only the municipality were under Title 52, and in an ancillary basis, the school board, of course, was subject to 52, BBB, et cetera, et cetera. But they were, they were different.
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, Your Honor, I, for, simply for purposes of argument today, I'll, I'm not going to fight this issue of whether, under the CUSAC statute, under 7A, that that's the only instance where the people can have an election on whether to have an elected or appointed board. Let's assume that that's the case. What I'm saying is, in a MARA statute, we all agree here about the principles of statutory construction. More recent is, is, is more instructive than an older statute. A more specific statute is more instructive than an older statute. A statute that preserves the self-determination rights of voters gets higher priority than a statute that doesn't preserve the self-determination rights of voters. And given all those circumstances, because we are in a MARA municipality where the legislature decided, "Look, in four years from now, you know, come heck or high water, you're going to be able to have this election."
You're talking about the Title 52.
I am.
I'll try to get it through. I'll try this one more time. Would you agree with me that a school board that's under full intervention under Title 18, that in terms of the law requiring it to have placed on the special election ballot, the issue concerning whether the voters want to have an appointed school board or elected school board, there are different, triggered, there are, there are different things that the school board has to show to qualify under that statute. Different hoops, so to speak, as opposed to a somewhat similar situation, but different, where the municipality is under Title 52 oversight, but the school board is not. Because remember, until 2013, that was the situation. And the reason why I ask it is, it's a half rhetorical question. Obviously, there's some differences there. And, and the reason why I think the defense has a stronger argument is because the intervention statute dealt directly with what the state regarded to be troublesome school districts, and they have their own standard of rehabilitation, so to speak, so as to trigger the necessity to put on the ballot the issue concerning whether or not the school board members are elected or the school board members are appointed with troublesome school districts. Title 52 deals with a troublesome municipality that on an ancillary basis obviously has a school board within its geographical location. But is that not? I remember, both the 2002 legislation and 2010 amendments occurred before Camden was placed under state intervention. Your argument would have been a different argument if you'd made it in 2012, assuming that the state had put Camden under the economic recovery term period four years before 2012.
Yeah, I don't disagree with any, anything you said. Obviously, there are different, there are just, there's different statutory frameworks. But let's talk about what's more specific. I mean, 18A, the CUSAC law is.
18 is more specific. I'll answer your question. 18 is far more specific. It deals with troublesome, I actually, how it could be, how it could be more specific.
Your Honor, I would respectfully.
MIRA deals with troublesome municipalities that may or may not have ancillary troublesome school districts, might. But Title 18 deals specifically with troublesome schools. And these are troublesome, the state determines based upon its own metrics what school districts need state intervention. I have no idea what metrics to use, and I don't really care. The state makes that decision, the state has powers to do that. But I'll let you, for the record, make the argument, that's a very tough argument to make, that somehow in this context, Title 52 is more specific in addressing the issue than Title 18 is.
Your Honor, the reason I would say that it is is because Title 52, MARA, deals with one municipality and one school district. It was always intended for one municipality, for school districts, only been used for one. If you look at the legislative history, the Camden Freedom Act, why is it called the Camden Freedom Act? Because it's dealing with one municipality. And the legislature in the Camden Freedom Act said indefinitely, come four years from now, you're going to have a chance to vote on whether your board is going to be elected or appointed.
It may be factually true that at least 21 senators and 41 assembly people had the city of Camden in mind when the legislation was passed, but the legislation itself doesn't state this only applies to Camden. Could apply to another municipality someday, come out. Plus, remember, Camden was not under, Camden School Board was not under intervention either in 2002 or when the 2010 amendment came, came about.
That's true, Your Honor, but here, here's the thing, in, in 27 BBB-63, that's the composition of the Board of Ed during the rehabilitation term, there's very specific rules in there about how the school board is going to be composed, depending on, among other things, whether or not it's in rehabilitation, whether it's subject to state monitoring. Then in 63.1, the legislature does not put those conditions. It's an indefensible, it's an unconditional, you have the right four years from now to vote. And the legislature, I would argue, knew at the time in 2010 that Camden schools were troubled, that they were subject to the risk of intervention at any time. We see from Chapter 63, they knew how to write a law that said the school board composition will differ depending on whether the district is in intervention status or not. But they didn't do that. In 63.1, they said, "Four years from now, you have to have an election," notwithstanding any other law. I understand that's the point about the different subsections, but at the end of the day, first of all, I think they all read together. And second of all, it is the more recent law, it is three years after authorization to take over a school district.
Both sides have cited maxims of statutory interpretation. And my guess is, I don't want to be hyperbolic, there are probably 20, 30, 40 different maxims. Usually, there's both the English and the Latin versions of the maxims of statutory interpretation, and to a very large extent, if you want to be intellectually honest. If you want to, if it's preordained that you want to reach a certain result, you can find maxim, some maxim of statutory interpretation to get that there. These maxims of statutory interpretation provide you with roadmaps, they're fair enough. But that maxim, I think, gives, gives out to a situation where I have to ask myself, which of these two competing statutes, and again, I refer to Title 52 and Title 18 rather than the specific subsections, but both you and Mr. Tamusi have made mention to them, which one the legislature intended to apply in the context of a school board that is under full state intervention? And I think the answer is easy. I think it's got to be Title 18, I don't regard it as being legally close. I think you have a good faith argument to make, and there is language that you can point to, I agree with that. But it's hard for me to imagine otherwise. And I also think that that has to be the correct interpretation because, and this dovetails to some extent in terms of the arguments that we'll go into shortly about periods of limitation and that type of thing, I don't want to trivialize what you're doing here. All right? So I say this with full respect. But you're arguing over whether or not the citizens of the city of Camden get to elect at this point a school board that, whose only powers are advisory. I mean, it's all well and good to talk about disenfranchisement and that type of thing, but none of these school board members, assuming you're correct, and they should be elected at this point, they're elected basically to give advice. And the reason why I started off your oral argument with asking whether or not you knew any similar situations is, is that, that seems to be very unusual to me. It's unusual that we elect an advisor to somebody else, with somebody else being fully free to reject that advice and also being fully free to get advice from the guy on the court.
That's the way Newark operates, Your Honor.
I'm pretty qualified, and I mean, as we talk now, Newark has also been under intervention or some issues, Jersey City.
Your Honor, the way Newark was put, I don't know exactly what level of intervention Newark was put into, but Newark has had an uninterrupted elected Board of Education, that at least at some points, I don't know if they ever were divested of all powers, I honestly haven't researched whether Newark.
But here's the point, that they met. If you take away this 95% of the school board's powers, the 5% that they still have powers to do on their own, right, not simply advise, that may be, that 5% in some contexts may be critical, right? And it's still, it's still, if somebody tells me, I hate to give analogies, but there are analogies to it, it's one thing to either enhance an elected official's powers or to decrease an elected official's powers. But to tell that elected official, "You will no longer have any power other than to whisper into somebody else's ear what you think should occur," in essence is to completely emasculate that elected official. Because that elected official is then, has the power to do what? To do what anybody on the street can do, which is whisper advice, tell advice, give advice to any, any elected official. Which is why I wasn't being flippant, where I compared it to the dog catcher. Again, the dog catcher is proverbially considered to be a fairly low elected official. That's why it's used when you want to insult somebody and you say, "You couldn't be elected dog catcher." That's usually when we refer to dog catchers. I don't even know whether that in New Jersey.
None of the first issue.
I saw the 469-6.
Judge, the, there is, first of all, there has never been, and there has not to this day, but any explanation as to why the period should be extended.
Your approval, is the election made rather than either a nomination before with sample ballots? April, when you have a school board election in April, sample ballots go out. But keep in mind, in April of 2014, the board members weren't elected. So there was no sample ballot sent out saying, "Hey, these are the candidates, this is when you're going to be able to vote." And there was no sample ballot saying, "This is the question, and you're going to be voting on this question." So nothing went out. There's, the sample ballots is a, is a total red.
May I ask you this question? About the sample ballots. The special election in 2014 was April 21st or 23rd?
It was the 20th, the, the school elections for 2014 were held April 23rd.
Suppose you had filed this lawsuit on April 19th, 2014, and April 20th, the defense filed a motion that says, "It's premature." All right? What was the, what would the correct legal response be if you filed a couple of days before the election saying, "We don't need to wait for the election, we know what's on the ballot, it's too late for them to add the classification question, so it's not it, so we're not too early." And the defense said, "No, they aren't too early, let's see, let's see what happens on election day." Right? What should the appropriate legal response be by, by me?
Your Honor, the, the school elections are scheduled for April. I'm sure there's some municipalities in Camden County that held school elections in April 2014. Camden held no school election, Camden City held no school election whatsoever of any kind on, on April 23rd, 2014. So if, if, if Your Honor's question was, "Had I come to court 10 days, 15 days before the election?"
What, what, just one, what happened? Did anything happen on April 23rd?
Not in Camden City, Your Honor.
All right. Is, is April 23rd some date where if it's going to be on the ballot, that has to be the election day?
Absolutely, because that's, that's school election day the rest of the day.
I want to rephrase my question. Suppose on April 20th, you'd filed a lawsuit and said, "We haven't heard anything about an election April 23rd, it's mystifying." Title 52, Section BBB, et cetera, et cetera, requires this be on the ballot four years from the 2010 date, that the city of. from the 2010 date, that the city of Camden entered economic recovery, the economic recovery period, end quote, and yet, there's no election. I haven't heard anything about it, and filed the lawsuit." And the defense responded later that day, all right, by saying, "It's premature. Let's see what happens on April 23rd." And I get the motion. I'm the lucky guy that day, I get the motion, all right? What's the appropriate judicial response to that motion? Do I say, "You're right, Mr. Tamboose, it is premature?" Or do I say, "No, the cause of action is accrued, because legally, we know nothing is going to happen on the 23rd, and we know that that question is not going to be on the ballot on April 23rd, because there is no, there is no election April 23rd?"
I think the answer, Your Honor, would be that an action that's brought a couple days before election day, that doesn't have the time to bring the machinery, including the sample ballots, because then some of us would be mailed out, but doesn't have the chance to bring the machinery up, I think it was, it's not a lawsuit that would be premature, it would be a lawsuit that would be delayed. In that situation, I suppose you could say there is an anticipatory breach of civil rights or of obligations under Title 57, so that I would, I would say it's probably not premature.
Or you could say, "The cause of action has accrued, because we know it's not going to happen on the 23rd." You know where this is going.
I do, Your Honor, but here's-
You can try to use verbiage other than what the appropriate legal verbiage is, is that it's not premature, even though it's before April 23rd, because we know legally nothing can happen now on April 23rd, all right? It's not as though somebody is ready in a machine and knocking everybody's door and say, "That's something. We're going to have an election April 23rd. You all come out and vote, please," all right? It's not going to happen. It's not premature. The cause of action accrued before the election took place. That's the only question. Once the answer to that question is, "It's not premature," it has to mean that the cause of action has accrued. If the cause of action has accrued, then it accrues before April 23rd. It doesn't matter in this private, that was filed years later. It matters to the civil rights action only if I was wrong on the substance, all right? I'm right on the substance, that doesn't matter either. There's no civil rights action, because there's no civil rights violation. But assuming I'm wrong on the substance, and there was a violation, that's tricky for you, because the two years really does matter, okay? There's no section 4, colon, 69, there's 6C when it comes to a statute of limitations in that regard. There are exceptions, or there's a discovery rule, there is a continuing violation, and we'll comment on that, but assuming that doesn't save it, if the cause of action accrued a day before April 23rd, all right, then they're both out of time.
I'll tell you, I cited these cases in my reply, that you have cases where a challenge is brought to qualifications of somebody who's running for office, okay? And when you look through how the New Jersey courts have handled them, you look, you see this consistent pattern of accrual being on election day, even though the petitions are filed well before that, even though the qualifications of the office holders are discoverable well before that.
I recall a case cited that was, that was a published decision, that was in the four-square or three-and-a-half square point.
No, Your Honor, on the question, there's no in jurisdiction cases about when the cause of action over the failure to hold an election at all accrues. So the next best thing that is out there is, when does, when do causes of action over election day violations?
We've presumed that in that fact scenario, the putative aggrieved party could not have filed 24 hours before the election day. The question always comes to the same point. Could the plaintiff have filed an hour before, a day before, a week before? If the answer is yes, then it has to be, because the cause of action accrued earlier than the election, than the election. If the cause of action genuinely only accrued because of something that occurred on election day, then I think you're right. But here, if there was a violation, that violation was in stone at least seven or eight days beforehand, again, with the sample ballots, there was 18 days, what is this time, 18 days by statute? So by day 17, I mean, the sample ballots kind of put you on notice, except it's a discovery argument, which is not only, by the way, not only what did the person actually know, it's what did the person, what did a reasonably situated person under the same circumstances, what should they have known? So the sample ballots only go so far. The critical time period is not the sample ballots, it's the 18-day rule. That is the real deadline. If it's not done by the 18th day, it's not going to be on, it's not going to be on any ballot. If there is an election on election day, and here, there was no election day.
No, look, Judge Mariso in the town of Harrison case makes clear that it's actual, not actual notice, not what the person should have known. In any event, the transaction that occurs 18 days prior is the school board sends some paperwork to the county clerk. This doesn't get advertised in the legal notices, this isn't put up on the website, this is a purely administrative ministerial function, and the argument is that that administrative ministerial function that's not public, not advertised, this private transfer of information is enough to cause accrual, the cause of action.
Shouldn't the average informed voter in the city know whether, it's almost worse, now that, again, it's been clarified, there was no election. That's kind of more obvious than there is an election, but I haven't studied the ballot to see what everything on the, to see whether or not something is on a ballot in regards to whether the board members should be elected or appointed. If somebody is that interested in what's going on with the Board of Education, they presumably either knew or should or should know whether or not there's an election that year.
That's not a requirement to cast a ballot, Your Honor.
No, no, but if you're arguing a discovery rule situation, all right, it's part of whether or not the discovery rule should apply. It's not just whether or not your plaintiff knew that this issue wasn't on the ballot on April 23, 2014, it's whether or not a reasonably informed, summarily situated voter should have known.
I think, Your Honor, if we're talking about the reasonably informed voter, as opposed to the proverbial political junkie that's studying these transfers of, internal transfers of information, I think what that reasonable voter would know is, "Hey, I just came into work from the suburbs where some other municipality was holding an election, and I didn't see my polling place open this day." Or, "I drove by my schools, and I didn't see the polling place open this day." I think that's when the average voter is aware that the, that the polling places weren't open. Based on, just based on what we know as a matter of common sense with the level of political engagement, I think that's when the average voter would know. But let me, let me get back to the point about the knowability of something prior to the election. The cases I cited deal with the question of somebody turns in a nominating petition running for office. So if you're, if you're running, if you're running as a Republican or a Democrat, you're turning in your nominating petition in April, and if you're running as an independent, you're turning in your nomination petition in June. And then comes election day, the courts are clear that you can challenge the qualifications of a candidate with the cause of action accruing on election day under the contest statute. Is that correct? Is that directly on point here? It isn't. But we have this general principle out there that the cause of action for these kinds of violations occurs on election day. There's a case that says it actually runs when the oath of office is administered, weeks after that. I'm not finding any in-state or out-of-state cases, for that matter, which have this proposition that you should sometime prior to election day, and we don't know when. I mean, because here we're talking about, was it, is it sample ballots, is it this day that this private administrative paperwork should have-
Well, here's the thing, the action of the little prior right has a very short string attached, and it's 45 days. That evidence is some desire, at least by the Supreme Court, that these matters be haled expeditiously to address the issue, and that two years later.
Your Honor-
Let me give Mr. Tamboose the floor for a bit. I've had you on the hot seat for a little bit. Let me give you a brief rest to have Mr. Tamboose.
So Title 19, in particular, 19, colon, 60, dash, 4, which states that the clerk has to receive from the Board of Education the qualifying election ballot question 18 days before the event, is not a private filing, it's a public event. Just like under Title 19, the filing of nomination petitions for candidates is not a private filing, but a public event. And in particular, if you want to draw an analogy to the nominated positions of candidates, an issue with which I have great familiarity, you need to file your petition challenges within three days in order to determine whether or not that candidate is on the ballot properly. Here, there is nothing private. Everything is public, and this is an event that people clearly were lying in wait for and did nothing about.
I was in the five, six months for me April 23rd. Put aside the Civil Rights Act for a second, just on the action of the little prior right.
Your Honor, I think we have a confusing statute. We have possibly three different fonts of, four possibly fonts of information about, that would inform citizens on filing rights. You have the Faulkner Act INR provisions, you have the provisions in 18A, colon, 9, you have the provisions in 18A, colon, 7A, and you have the provisions in Title 50.
How does waiting two years make that any more clear than would have been if it had been filed 44 days after the election date? That may be, it sounds to me, because nobody, I hate to say this, but it sounds like nobody would have been motivated to do anything for a couple of years.
Your Honor, I think that the issue of, I think if you canvassed news articles and the interest of people to restore the Board of Education of Camden to an elected board, I think, I know, I've seen articles that have gone continually, in terms of exactly what the correct legal framework for getting to that result is, I'm not sure that that was entirely clear in 2014. And I just, if I could, Your Honor, please, in the Princeton Freeholders case, Borough Princeton, nine years after the cause of action accrues, and the court found the interest of justice exception to apply. Why? Because there's important public interest at stake. Mullen versus-
I want to comment on that.
And in Mullen versus Apolida.
There's probably something of a sliding scale, depending upon the importance of the interest that you want to vindicate and how lenient you're going to be for not enforcing the 45-day rule. And again, I don't want this to be taken out of context, we're talking about whether or not individuals who either are going to be, we're not talking about disenfranchising anybody in the sense that a position that everybody else is voting on, we're not allowing some group of people not to vote, it was either, for whatever, for whatever reason. Renegades, whether or not individuals who serve on an advisory board of education should be appointed or elected in a state where one-third of the branches of government are appointed. This is not a state where everybody gets elected to everything. And doing that sliding scale and looking at two years post-election, two years and two days post-election, with the right to be vindicated and on an advisory school board, it's not as though we're close to being an equipoise. It's like a 30-pound weight and a feather, to be perfectly candid with you. And it really does sound like, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that it may be that these news articles that you refer to evidence a certain awareness that the school board members were not being elected, they were being appointed, but that actually cuts against you. It shows you, people were aware of it. For whatever reason, they just didn't file an action of the little prerogative, not this 45 days after the election, but not one year and 45 days after the election. And I think that absolutely comes against any notion that the court should be applying 4, colon, 69, there's 6C. Let me give you the last word on that, because then I want to go to slightly different argument regarding the Civil Rights Act.
Right, I would respectfully submit, Your Honor, that the right to vote is never a feather, that the right to vote over the official spokespeople, who are going to talk, who are going to represent the people of Camden, because the people of Camden don't pick the superintendent, they don't pick the commissioner. Who is going to pick the, who's going to represent the people of Camden? And whether they're picked by their mayor or they're picked by an election, I think that the legislature's, the importance of that right, I think, is pretty self-evident. The legislature's decided how that right is to be exercised, and it's for these reasons that I think the interest of justice exception, when I mentioned Mullen, I mentioned, Mullen is this, is this morass, or you have this, it's not entirely clear what's going on with the municipalities and they're exercising, they're not exercising power, they're exercising power, and it's years and years after the fact. That's simply property rights. That's about what's going on in your neighbor's lawn. It's not about your right to vote. It's not about deciding you can cast a ballot here or you can't cast a ballot here. And I think the Supreme Court in Sampson made very clear where the right to vote stand, even if it's just for an advisory board, I would submit, Your Honor, even if it's just for an advisory board, I think that Supreme Court has decided in Sampson where that right fits in the scheme of rights of New Jersey. And it's going to be a lot more than property, property rights, and whether the motel next door is using the dunes or not.
All right, the court concludes that this is not a Section C situation, there's been no explanation given for the rather extraordinary delay for bringing any type of action to challenge what did occur in April 2014, the lawsuit filed two years and two years later, three years and two days later. And one of the common themes upon reviews, at least most of the cases that allow a margin, there was at least some reason. Sometimes it wasn't a great reason, but there was some reason that might some way excuse the delay, that type of thing. Here, there really isn't any. And again, not to demean or belittle the advisory Camden School Board, is to simply note that there were different, there were different rights at issue. And to say that somebody on an advisory board is going to be appointed is not to disenfranchise all scores of people, because they're not electing that person to serve on an advisory board. And I think there is a difference between elected officials who have their own power to do things, it may be subject to certain types of review, that type of thing, but they at least on their own can exercise a certain level of policy discretion, and they were elected to do so, and those individuals' only power. And that's the way it seems in reading the statute that Mr. Tamboose read into the record about 15 minutes ago, that this is a purely advisory school board. It doesn't look like it's much more than that. Let's go on to the Civil, the Civil Rights Act statute of limitations is a bit different. We know that if the cause of action accrued on the election day or thereafter, and it would be thereafter, it would be election day, it's timely filed because two years falls on a Saturday, the action was filed, it was filed on Monday, blah, 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 blah. But we get into the same problem with the accrual date, and there's no reason for me to differ on that. So I still believe, Mr. Kay, that the accrual was at least a day, probably 18 days before April the 23rd. The only thing that would save you is either the application of the discovery rule of Lopez versus Squire, or an argument that this is a continuing violation. You did spend a lot of time on your brief argument, this is a continuing violation, but it doesn't look like one. It looks like it's one discrete failure to act, of which there may be deadly consequences to it. But much like an automobile accident that happens on April the 23rd, 2014, a plaintiff may treat suffer the consequences of a discrete active negligence that occurs on April 23, 2014, for the rest of his or her life, but it is not a classic application of the continuing violation doctrine. Let me give Mr. Tamboose his motion, let me give him a chance to address it verbally, and Mr. Kay, I think he's fine.
So I might have spent a lot of time on it, because I think the court hits the nail on the head. You could draw the analogy to a Torquay's Act case, where the dangerous condition of a roadway causes the accident, and if the dangerous condition-
And with completely, for all practical purposes, would completely viscerate a statute of limitations under the Civil Rights Act. All right, whatever issue, either one of you want me to go over, other than what I regarded to be as the main issues that were addressed, Mr. Tamboose?
Just one more, Judge. Judge, we believe that Superintendent Rahafard is entitled to qualified immunity under the Act. The way this was pled, it was pled more than just conjunctive relief requested.
Okay, could you say your, could you say your name and title?
Yes, my name is Monique Ragsel, and I am a parent. I am a parent, I'm a resident of Camden, New Jersey, co-founder of Save Camden Public Schools, a member organizer of New Jersey United and South Jersey United.
What did you think of the hearing today and the outcome, where basically the case was thrown out by the judge?
I basically think that the judge was speculating a lot of the statutes and throwing in extra statutes, and not on the basis that we were, we were charging on. And I think that with his speculation, he was pretty much on the defendant's side and not thinking about the residents of Camden, the parents, and the people who actually put the lawsuit in.
What do you, what does this mean for, what do you think this means for voters in Camden who aren't able to elect their school board?
I think it just means that it's, his decisions- I think it just means that it's, this, his decision today was like a suppression for voters. But I think when we can educate and inform the residents, and we can still push this issue, we still can do petitions, and we're still going to do an appeal, and I think this is something that, you know, voters need to hear. This is something that they should know. I wish many more of our residents was able to make it today, because they could have seen how we don't get democracy in Camden, no matter what level we fight on.
Tell me your name and title for the record.
My name is Vaida Neal, and I'm an activist. I'm also a member of Save Camden Public Schools. I'm also a member of New Jersey Communities United, and also a member of South Jersey United, and I fight for education reform.
Okay, what do you think of the case today as the community sued the mayor and the city school board for not allowing there to be a vote, for voters to decide whether we will have an elected or an appointed school board?
Well, I think the judge had primarily made up his decision based on the briefs that the lawyers submitted, and I think that he was far off, because he went off on the deep end, talking about our rights as individuals, voting rights, and different recovery acts that had nothing really, basically, to do with the education. So I think he looked at the wide range scope of Camden and what's going on, instead of looking at the smaller scope, which is the Board of Education.
What's next?
Well, next is, we're going to continue to fight. I mean, like, they've won the battle, but there's a whole war going on here. So we give round one to the district, but we're far from done. We got plenty of fight in us.
What do you say to those that say an elected school board is really going to be, not going to be much different? Like, why do you think it's important that there is an elected school board, even though it's an advisory board where they don't have a vote?
Well, I think it's right that the people be represented, and the only way that we're going to be represented is to elect people who look like us, who represent us in our community, and who fight for education. I think most of those people on the advisory board they have now no longer have anything to do with education, and maybe once upon a time they did, but they're, they're not, how can I put it? They're not a good representation of the parents and the students here in the city. We need parents that look like us. We need young parents that are willing to learn and educate themselves, and pass it on to the community.
Any closing thoughts?
Well, my closing thought is, I would just like to put the administration on notice, as well as the mayor. We coming. This is from Vaida. We coming, and we coming hard. We're not done fighting. We've only just begun.